I started the morning on a metal roof and that was hot and I just thought her while I was up there. She made it. We're just making how you made it through the day in the heat.
I was sitting at the, the arrow to turn left. At Jackson's corner, well motorcycles don't trip that lights. I sat there, I danced to one song, I danced to the other song. Sat there finally, I just went. I almost just went and there was a cop like two tires back, so I was like, oh, good catch. Sorry I'm late. You gotta see it all for me, and the chocolate took the time wrong, sorry.
Well, there's where there's, I'm like, I, I'm like, or I could break out the candy stash back there that we have hidden.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
We're, uh, we're, I guess we should start with the transfer station. I believe, uh...
Um, yeah, Randy gave you guys a note, I put that in your packet.
Yup.
Basically, he just wants the safety concerns addressed. Um, anything else, you know, if you go on the back burner, he's fine with it. There's some things that like, that metal thing that's...
Okay, let's pause and go back for a moment in time to show that only start out here, because I was not on ARPA committee. And I know that there was a list from ARPA committee that kinda like outlined a whole bunch of stuff. And then I think there was some back and forth about what made sense and what didn't make sense and, um, scope, so I guess... Two questions is, one, how much, how much money is there altogether?
Three hundred twenty-seven thousand... Two hundred something.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm certainly not looking to like itemize every penny tonight, I just wanna make sure that I have an idea of what we're even talking about.
Good.
And then... My other question is, I think, ARPA, I just wanna make sure that I understand the process, so ARPA, there was an ARPA committee that went through a bunch of things, I know that there were surveys that were filled out and a bunch of information that was reviewed altogether as a group. And then that was sort of put forward. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to or are going to be able to do every single item like that, correct?
So we need to prioritize it.
I just wanna set, I totally wanna make sure that I know what we're doing. Okay, so, from there.
You've got the ARPA list too.
Yeah. Do you have this, Joe?
I don't, uh, is it in here?
Uh, no, I have, I have brought this from home.
Yeah, I don't have one of those, I think that's where I miss a piece of this, that I don't...
A copy of it?
If you're able to easily do that, I would love a copy of that. Do you want one, Vicki?
Oh, yes, please, I would love one. Any information I can get, I'm, I'm kind of, uh, it's another thing that I feel like I don't know a lot about and, so...
I think that's the biggest piece that I'm missing, like, I wholeheartedly agree that transfer station and safety should come first, but not at the cost of everything else.
Well...
Depending on what it has to be.
Everybody uses the transfer station.
Correct. I guess my point, so my point being is if it was, like, and I'm just making something else, if it was a toss between cameras at the transfer station or Kenny Bunk Pond committee getting any money, I would err on the side of giving Kenny Bunk Pond.
I think too, in talking about Randy, like, I don't even think he's so much concerned about cameras and lighting. I think, um, because we operate pretty much during daylight hours.
Right, for the most part.
In the fall, it gets dark.
Yeah.
Right.
They change their hours to accommodate the daylight, so, might be something to consider, um...
What was all their concern about the granite walls up there? Because when I laid that out, all ten years ago, we didn't have a problem with those walls, I'm telling you, something deteriorated up there or something, it wasn't a problem.
I don't know specifically, um...
I think there's been...
Eighty thousand dollars if I foolishly am in concrete, that's ridiculous.
Um, I think there was, I think, if I, and I could be talking out my mouth, but, um, it, I think there was erosion and water runoff that came in and things started shifting.
If that's what's happened, then I can see that.
And that's, that's the way I understood it, um, I have not gone up there and put my eyes on it, which, I really, I'm behind the eight ball a little bit just stepping into this, that I haven't done so yet. Um, but I do want to.
And I know Randy can show you all that, he like walked me through all that stuff. I just happened to be up there passing out flyers one day.
You had one, right?
Yup.
Okay.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Should we just go down one by one and kinda prioritize them? On deciding whether we feel it's a safety issue or something that is... Not a safety issue.
However you wanna operate this workshop as the chair, it's fine by me.
Also, I think too, like, when we get to the cave unkind, Karen, you worked on...
Yeah, I have, I have a lot of information, I'll give you, you guys some background, I wanna show you the plans, because I don't think that you've ever seen the, the plans. And I can show you how we scaled back the scope to fit within the budget that we asked for.
Okay.
Awesome.
That's what you referred to the other night at the select board meeting and I said I'd like to see that.
Yup.
Yup.
Thank you. It looks a lot different than the first one.
Yeah, because the bids came in so high that, yeah, it didn't make sense, so... But everything that we do now, if we decide to do more later, I think the foundation will be there, we can add on if the town wants to add on, so...
They did. I guess we'll wait till we get there, yeah. Um, man, it'd be nice to practice it too, but... Replace, I, I, I don't know how to, what's, uh, I mean, five cameras, obviously know that's not a priority, but replace three retaining walls by the wooden metal cans, and that sounds pretty structural.
Yeah, and I think that's where, what Vicki was saying about the erosion.
I mean, if, if you don't, if, when they get, things like that get built, if you don't, as you, I don't know how many people know how this wall works, but what's under that stuff and what's behind it? And if there's allowance for drainage is the most important thing, so longevity and, I mean... And I don't know if things get run into up there, you know, they can put the cans in and out, I, I've, I've never stood there all day and watched any of that much, so... That's on me, I should do that.
Kind of, uh, just to catch up speed, we're kinda just chugging down through the list, we're trying to prioritize what we feel are, because this is a letter from Randy, he felt that if there wasn't a safety issue, it could be...
I wonder if we went on a scale from one to three, how we feel about priority wise, that we could each number them accordingly? And then come up with consensus?
That's great. At least we can pick a prioritizing.
Prioritize the safety.
Where, where are these? He didn't give us a list?
Well, we're going by the ARPA list right here.
Oh, he di- he didn't identify anything? Okay, and anything on the other projects or?
We're just working our way into it.
Ah, kidoki.
Alright, so, well, right off the retaining wall, I mean, we'll call one a major, we're going one's the important, three's the not important.
Yeah, well, I'm, I think everything is important, because it matters to people that worked on this, but I, but I think number one is something that we really want, number three is something we think could sit, sit by or later on.
And, and you wanna look at it from employee safety and then, and then, um, town, people's safety, but employee safety be...
Oh, everyone's safety.
Yeah, but they're up there more consistently, so, okay.
Uh, so, is the bottom one go with the top? Excavation for all new walls and backfilled and completely ready for new paving.
Brad, I think it's hard about that, the caveat that the paving out back could be put on.
Yeah, I know he said that, I wanna make sure that's not another item.
It, it is, I think, because he says something about that would be like eighty thousand dollars if it could come out of capital improvement. When I had a conversation with him about it, we were talking about the numbers are hard, because like the bids, they aren't coming in so high. Do you remember that? Yeah, he did say that, go on the back burner.
Yeah, when he, when he rattled off a bunch of things, he came like seventy, eighty thousand dollars he could save.
That was one of them, was the back parking lot, back area for that and paving for it.
I don't see that in any other way.
Was this the lower trash compact, because it's like lying down there, is that what that is?
So the next one?
He said that could be through capital improvement.
disturbed areas by the new walls and place two inches of base pavement. That, yeah, that must be it.
That's it.
That must be it.
Yup.
So we're gonna, we're gonna give that a three?
Yeah, evacuation for all the new walls and backfill and compact ready for new paving, is that part of that?
See again.
Evac, excavation for all, for all new walls and backfilled and compacted, ready for new paving.
If you do one, you gotta do the other.
So that's part of that?
Part of that, that Vicki said it could be capital improvement because of what they are.
Okay.
Well, no, hold on.
Yeah.
Hold on a second. The first item is to replace three retaining walls.
New walls.
And so then the se- I thought the second item, excavation for all new walls and backfilled, compact, it goes with number one.
Okay.
That's why I connected them.
Alright, good clarification, yeah, okay, good clarification, alright, that's the one, that's a lot.
And then the next one, I think, is... So one and two, one and two are together, so we're gonna call number one, that's a one.
Yup.
And so then number two would become a one.
Of, of, of numbered... These two. I think in order to do the first three things, kind of number four, those, I mean, that, that seems kind of important too.
Yeah, it does.
And I have, I have ones for one, two, three, four, the first four items. The lighting improvement I have is a two.
I'm still confused about that one.
The remove and replace five canopies, I have as a three. Um, adding the five cameras around the transfer station, I have as a three. Pouring a new slab below at the end of the yard area where the appliances are stored, I'm not sure what, what the...
That's the one that he said could be put on.
And that one I got as a three, because it doesn't seem like it goes with the other ones right now, but it really depends on, in my opinion, it would depend on drainage, you know, it's all that stuff heading for the new walls, anything that comes off of there. That would, and that would, that would raise my concern about it a little more. The protective railings on all the new retaining walls and casts in place, pockets, I have as a one. Sandblaster repaint the backhoe, though I feel like anything that the town owns should be maintained. I don't think that's a safety issue, um, so I have that as a three, and replacing the two retaining walls at the salt shed, I don't know why they need replacing, I don't know what the issue is with those.
He's been rebuilding that salt shed o- over time, because it was in such disrepair.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that would be a, you know, a luxury, I'd have to, have to really ask about that one, because he, just to, because he's trying to save that building.
I get that, that's been going on for, since it was built.
Well, yeah.
And it's been an ongoing...
Just had a discussion with a neighbor about that.
It's true, it's, we've had, we, it, we've had issues since, since it was built.
Yeah, I'd like to go back to six, remove and replace five canopies, two over the wood bin and one over the metal roof. I've talked to him about it, though, they're really bad, they've been hit by the backhoe, and they busted them up and they're, they're unsafe. He's... Yeah, he's really adamant, that one's scary, I just wanna let you know.
Alright, no, that's good, because I don't know that, so I was thinking that was...
I haven't seen, but he said, and the way they wanna set them up now, this way, is that, well, we won't have to do that, we'll avoid it, um, to, to do that, so I think that needs to...
So that, that shouldn't be a three in your opinion, to me?
I, I don't think it should be, I, yeah, I think it goes right along.
Good to know.
And the, the lighting, I think, is a three, I think we need to look at the lighting at some point in time, and the, and the, they... We need to get somebody in there that knows stuff about cabling, internet, because I hear there's internet there, I've walked it, the system that's there is horrible, it is the worst butcher job I have ever seen. Um, those cameras don't work, the cameras need, we need to have some type of cameras up there for insurance purposes, for somebody, you know, getting hurt or, or whatever, but what the, there, there's something there. We just need somebody that knows what the heck they're doing, because that's just a lot of money. He always complained about that, I was surprised he left that in there as long, as high as he did. So I, I agree with that one being a three, you put that as a three, right?
Adding the five cameras?
Uh, the, number five.
I think the IT committee is working on a proposal for that too.
Yeah, I would look at that as a capital improvement.
Because I didn't really know a lot about it, I do know that, eh, there was a time that there was virtually no lighting up there.
Yeah, I did as a two also.
Right.
This part here, now I got to see eyes on it, this is kind of a double, the third one down, the two inches surface, surface paved rally hill and flat area by the lower trash, there's two things in that one, and one of them, Brad, said you didn't have to do.
It must be the gravel and the lower, lower trash.
Yup.
Lower trash, is that the one that they have out there free, so, sitting down there by the salt shed?
The problem with that down there is that when you pile in the winter time, it's gravel, so it all piles up, and they have a problem with the dumpsters down there, because the machine is going down there and getting, getting...
Oh, I mean, he said you could put it off.
But that doesn't really need to be paved, I mean, it should have been paved this year, but most of the time the ground freezes, you know, lumping with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, and it didn't this year, but also, if you're gonna, in my, to my way of thinking and knowing, if you're gonna replace retaining walls and such, you're still gonna have, uh, you're still gonna have water running somewhere, and so you may be creating an issue or, or not taking care of what you're just putting in by not doing that too.
There's a problem when they paved around the, uh...
Sorry.
Recyclables, okay, it made the water go down, in, around, behind, towards the salt shed, so it makes a question there sometimes.
Yup, but it, it's all, that was graded and paved, that would send it, send it in full sun the other way.
He's still wearing the hat.
I'd love to see him do the same thing, without any of our input.
About the transfer? Okay for new wheels for the dumpster that they're fixing up there and rods, because if it's over five hundred, I gotta get your permission.
Well, you gotta put a, no, that's, no, just put a PO in.
Okay, even if it's over?
Yeah.
Okay, he's supposed to give me an estimate.
Okay.
You should make them pay for it, that one's staying on up. The problem here is that you do.
Yeah, that's always been a little bit of a bone contention.
Well, if these are, if really these are the number ones, I don't know, I'm stuck on number three, I don't know what would be...
Yeah, how do you break that out?
I, yeah, I don't know if Randy would know.
I'd love him to.
Yeah.
See what his mind is.
Let me make you a copy, a copy of this.
But we don't...
So these are based on the estimate, this is, they're our estimates, right? These are our actual RFPs received, so that's the other thing, is that when you look at the RFPs received, then you've got a few of these that have paving, right? Well, paving has just a one lump sum and that, and those bids, so it's not an easy, like, we can say which items we want to do, but I don't think we're gonna have a solid total.
You may have to put it out to bid again, because the way we did it was a general contractor for certain work and then electrical would separate.
Right.
Yup.
And my point is, is if we change some of these items, because they just lumped it all together, right? It's like paving, for example, if we say, oh, we want you to do this and pave this, but we don't want you to do line three, so there'll be no paving for line three, but there might be for another line, like, it changes this whole entire thing.
Does.
Wow, holy smokes.
Right. Right, so these, these numbers that we're looking at are just the estimates that are, like, oh, we think it'll be around this much, and then...
And it's weighing off, look at some of these.
Yeah. And that's what happened.
I didn't sign that the other, oh, I said... Right?
Yeah.
But, and we did do the, in an open meeting, and voted on it, so, that was my...
Okay, so what was the...
I said the same thing when I came in.
So the first one and the second one are together.
I don't think we can.
This line here.
This line here, and is a separate item, that can be put off. You have to figure out how, what portion of that is, but that's what he said is separate.
So that we would need to do the top part?
Yeah, you gotta do up in front of the bench.
Okay, so two inches of base pavement and two inches of surface.
Yeah, but the other thing...
But the, and pave gravel hill and flat here.
Okay.
Okay.
It'd be nice to be done.
But it's not for safety.
Right.
So we're calling that a one and a three?
One and a three.
So one, 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 and...
And then...
I see seven, one.
There's a lot of ones in here.
Of course there are. Yeah, it's alright.
The next one, business and extreme safety, you have a...
One, two, half a three, four.
Yup.
Um...
To me, that's, that's also safety.
Yup.
Safety issue to have lighting.
Nine?
But, there, there, so...
What do you have for four?
Oh, maybe I ca- maybe I counted that one as replace two retaining walls or something.
Yeah, I put a question mark on that.
I had a question mark, you have a weird...
I have a weird...
I don't know what that is.
I think I counted it as a one, but I don't think it is, it looks like a Y. Now, with the backhoe, I'm gonna go back to the backhoe thing.
Yeah, same thing.
You don't take out ARPA, like, the lights in the paving, that hill could come out of capital improvement, because they were qualified.
Didn't we put the, the backhoe, didn't we put something in the budget this year, or was that last year?
No, I think that was this year.
I think it's supposed to be, and they...
Yeah, I think that was just for regular maintenance, for upkeep going forward, yeah, I don't think it was for...
Line item at one point in time.
That's what I thought too.
It was like a PM.
We were talking about doing, doing the, painting it.
Yeah.
We need, we should maintain our stuff, that's the, that's one of the, that's one of the things that concerns me about a lot of the scope of this work, and that's why, in my mind, uh, I would prioritize more things that, A, the safety, but B, um, things that everyone uses. May or may not make me unpopular, but that's not my concern right now.
Randy, what are the two retaining walls, the very bottom one, at the salt shed?
I don't know the salt shed, I would expect it's the side walls.
Were those, was it hit?
The inside or the outside?
I would say that it's inside cement.
There was something that they were talking about, him and Tom were talking about, kept getting hit. New rock commissioner, Tom.
Yeah.
And how that didn't happen this year.
That actual wall, that, that metal like bent, it was to go higher up, wasn't it?
I thought he was taking care of it, but I don't, there's two retaining walls at the salt shed.
I'm gonna have to go up there, take a look.
Why don't we put that one as a two? Until we figure that out.
I got it as a question mark.
Well, I was just gonna go and tweener.
Yeah, no, I get that.
I don't know if he's back from his trip to Vermont, we could check with Brad, because...
Yup.
That was, you know, ask him.
Yeah, he was supposed to have been back last night.
Yeah, he's back.
But so regardless, we essentially need to just, we've prioritized the number ones, and then I think we have to go, we have to put it back out.
Yeah.
And then we can send it to these people that submitted originally and say, hey, here's the new.
So...
Are there any specifications on these things, so that when you do send it out, you know you're getting apples to apples?
I believe this one was.
Yeah, Brad did this one, he did pretty good, um...
He had all the measurements, all how he wanted, you know, the thickness of the cement walls and all that stuff.
So either, I don't have expertise in paving. Either, you know, somebody does that, or we get an engineer to do it, like, yeah, somebody has to do a scope of work that's clear.
Yup.
I think that scope of work existed specifically for the transfer station stuff, I believe Brad had a good, solid...
Yeah.
Scope of work that we just have to modify.
He knows the, the two inches, the two inches, the compaction, the gravel base, the, I mean, it's very well...
Yeah.
Somebody else has to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. I think the town manager should do it.
I would love to, I just don't have all the knowledge.
I can help you.
I also think that Tom too, the new rock commissioner, has that knowledge.
Yes, he does, he's...
That's what I was thinking, we need to fold, I wonder how much Brad folded him in on this.
I don't know, I don't know how much, I mean, they only spent a couple days together, so...
Well, Brad's still around for a little bit, so we can tap into him.
Be awesome. Are we all in agreeance, yeah, what our number ones are?
Not sure.
Number one and number two, half of number three. I have number four. Number six.
Yup.
And number nine.
Yup.
I gotta number these things, because I'm not...
That's what I did, yeah, that's what I did.
Okay.
And how much does that really cut out?
We don't know.
Right.
That's the problem.
I'm gonna put that in there too.
Probably should give a one.
Would do it for salt shed?
If he was worried about it.
Yeah.
That's what I, that's what I think.
The very bottom one, Randy? Yeah.
I think we should.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I look at it, it, you know, if you wanted to fix it, there's a big reason why you wanted to fix it if it couldn't.
And it's structural, and so, as opposed to paving.
I'd still like to give, I'd like to see the whole thing happen, but I'd really like to see it happen more at the estimated price than these bid prices.
Well, yeah, the bids were at a wrong time of year.
Alright, should we just jump through the same thing?
I would, I would like to skip over Bungana and go to Kenny Bunk Pond. My feeling is that they've worked for two years.
Three and a half.
Oh, three and a half, sorry, I don't wanna cheat on that time, three and a half years to get all of this put together, and I think that we should take care of Kenny Bunk Pond, and then what is left over from ARPA funds could then go to the transfer station, and then if there is anything left over, could go to Bungana. And that's just my...
I agree with you up to a point, because Bungana, that bridge has got to be taken care of. It's, it's a safety hazard, one down on the lake, it's closed, I'm assuming.
The one that goes to the court, the volleyball court?
Nope, the one that goes over to the swimming area for the Y.
Yup.
It's all eroded underneath.
Do they close it?
They brought it into the transfer station.
That was the one that goes to volleyball court.
Yeah, this is a huge bridge, that the pylon, the pier's washed out from underneath it, and I don't know why it's still standing.
You go down to the, to the beach, to the left.
Yeah, way down, way, way out, way out.
Big bridge, and it's all eroded, there's a stream underneath it, and the some, this, oh, the spring, yeah, that's how they, they go over to, to there. They, they are now going through the woods, but that one would, if, there's a priority down there, if we can put, I don't know how much it would cost to fix that.
Well, if it's one bridge, could it come out of capital funds?
That's what I was thinking.
We're gonna have to take a look at it.
I just wanna be aware that we keep saying capital funds, capital funds. And we also, last meeting, talked about capital funds to get the town hall expansion off the ground, and I, I'm totally in favor of that. I just, in, in the world that I work in, we have capital funds allocated annually, and we have a plan. And the plan may change as we go, because sometimes projects take us, but there's at least an intended sort of priority, it's similar to this, right? There's an intention list, then you get a bid in, and you're like, oh my gosh, there goes on my budget on one huge safety item, I just, I guess that's maybe something I need to spend some time knowing exactly how much is in there and what...
To me, it's like...
It's not a slush fund, I guess, is my point.
I know that, but it's like, identify what's gonna come out of ARPA, identify what could potentially come out of capital funds, and then we'd have to make a plan for capital funds. I think that'll be another phase of looking at the number, how much to be put out to bid, do, you know, I don't, you don't wanna expend all of capital funds. To me, this is like an identifying phase. This is ARPA, this is potential capital funds, you know, once we get the ARPA situated, then we look at our cap, we might go to the cap, our capital funds list and start crossing things off that, saying, no, we don't wanna, we don't wanna do that.
We have to prioritize that as well.
I'm not gonna railroad the whole ARPA fund workshop about capital funds, but I'm just gonna make a note, because I have some questions about that, that can get...
Talking about, it was probably built by a guy, it's maybe twenty years ago, and I don't know if they're still doing the same programs again, or not, it could be... They don't provide the material, but they will provide the labor part, and as I say, I still, I don't know if they're still doing those state-type projects on it, but it wouldn't be done this year, I don't think, but it would be something in the planning stage, you could, but it's worth looking into.
And I think with Bungana, like, that's a lot of stuff we can look into, um, I AARP has... And I think with Bunginut, like, that's a lot of stuff we can look into. Um, AARP has like a elder friendly program. If you join that, you can get grant funding, cause it helps make your parks elder friendly. So they will give you money to do things like making things ADA compliant, stuff like that. So when we get to that, you know, what's gonna come out of capital funds, we're gonna have to probably consider how do we, like that, you know, maybe we could find a group that we pay the labor or we pay the supplies, they'll do the labor, that sort of thing and try to bring capital funds.
Alright, well, then that's, let's go to the Kennybunk Pond beach.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I show you the, the specs and so you have a better idea of what we're looking at in terms of what we scale back?
Sure.
Can I ask some questions first, just to, to give up the speed? Now, I remember during budget season, we had made an, uh, an appropriation for, that was approved and we ended up getting the, the shed, the lighting, the telephone pole, and, um, with, there was supposed to be a fence that was supposed to go on the, the Dagel property.
Yep.
At the beach. Did that ever happen?
No, the Dagels came back to us and said they didn't want the town doing anything on their property. So, that did not happen.
Did?
We were, we did get, um, twenty thousand dollars from the taxpayers. That money was spent on the shed, preparing the grounds to put the shed on, the telephone pole, the lights, um, architect support. What else? Survey, there was a survey done. No, we have the signal for poles. They're ready. We, no, that was, um, that was from the state. We did not pay for that. Um, I think what else we had done there. But that ate up the twenty thousand pretty quickly.
Was this, was there a survey done to, to determine exactly where that property line is?
Yes.
And that's all agreed on?
That's all staked out, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I don't know, gather round, folks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, well, aside and I've seen this.
They're talking about scaling back.
Well, you've probably seen this as much.
Well, yeah, I was.
So, okay, this is the road. This is the beach side. Um, so we were gonna put an ADA crosswalk in, ADA, um, you know, warning lights, the pedestrian signal lights, we're gonna go in. We have a new, um, kinda entry into the beach with steps going down to the beach. Um, this was a handy, uh, handicap ramp with pavers at the end. These are boulders. That would be some sort of a boundary line to the, the Dagel property, but you know, we're not, we're never gonna keep people off their property unless they do something. So, um, we said we'll just, you know, put something there.
So that's how, that'll be the handicap access, the ramp, that's the bridge.
So you'll see in a minute when I show you the numbers, what we've decided to do is eliminate this ramp. And not make it ADA compatible at this point in time. Eliminate the warning plates. Still, obviously, keep the, the crosswalk, keep the landing with the new steps going down. And keep the, the boundary. So anything that's in this yellow highlight is what we're proposing to keep. And we eliminate a lot of costs by taking this out.
Question, and I don't know the answer. But I know in a building, when you renovate, you have to get to ADA compliant. Okay?
So.
Does this come under that type of?
For buildings, that's the amount of square footage you have and how many levels.
Okay.
Yeah.
But.
We do not have to make this ADA compliant.
I mean, outside, that doesn't, doesn't matter. Okay. I just wanna make sure we don't get caught up in that. Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, that would probably be too steep. I was thinking the stairs could become a ramp. Somehow that would.
Yeah.
But once you get a wheelchair down to the beach, where do you go from there?
I know, where are you going?
Exactly. And, and this, um, I think they call this universal compliant versus ADA compliant. This is much larger, um, and would, you know, if somebody wanted to bring a wheelchair onto this platform, there would be room for that, which is something that we don't have now.
Yeah. I, I.
How much does that save there?
I'll show you the numbers in a second.
I'm sorry.
Um, okay, so this is the parking lot. And initially in our plans, which I think was a little overkill, but we had, we had plans to, um, regrade all of this and get a good slope and have an area here where the water could flow into to prevent, you know, waters going into the waterways going down to Kennybunk. We were gonna implement parking spots for cars, trailer parking over here, do picnic tables, new plantings. We've eliminated all of that. Um, the only thing that we wanna keep, this is the shed. Um, we wanna keep the, um, paved apron going in so that we have a, a good surface to put the in and out gate. The gate allows us, um, not only to control access, but it also provides us an opportunity to generate some revenue down the line if we wanna charge people from out of town or out of state. We would keep one handicap parking spot over here and this, um, pathway would be smaller. We would shrink it a little bit, but it would be a pathway that a wheelchair can go over and be universal compliant. Not paved, which would be ADA compliant. So we changed the specs there. We wanted to move the outhouse, um, the porta potty over here closer to the road, so more people from the beach would use it instead of having it way back here. Um, we would eliminate those, you know, the same warning plates here. The other pedestrian signal light would be here. And then you go across to the beach. Okay.
I do like the separation between the pedestrians and the traffic. That's something that's always made me a little apprehensive. The way that the crosswalks have been painted as of late do that. When, when I was on the board before, we had bu, uh, cement cubes.
Yeah.
And, and they were there and we, we painted the crosswalk from there across to try to keep the traffic separate from the pedestrians and then, I don't know, later on, they paved the road and they painted the crosswalk on in the back at the other place, the other location where it was formerly. And it's been there ever since.
And now there's no, there's no crosswalk, which is really dangerous.
It is. We should get that, get on the state, get that.
Yeah, so this opening will be further down and, and it will be closer to the boat ramp, cause a lot of people would just not even go through that crosswalk. They would just go to the boat ramp. So this will actually go that way and everything will be heading in the same direction.
I like it.
But even though it's a town aid road, the town, I mean, a state aid road, town is responsible for the the pricing. So the scheduling is scheduled, it's just all the rain.
Yeah, no, do you have any idea of when the expected date is that that would happen?
The problem with them doing that though.
But it's been scheduled for probably about two weeks now.
According to Brad, the problem with that is it's gonna go back to the existing opening.
Yeah, for now, but it needs, it should have one, no matter where it is for right now.
Safety issue and I'm glad to have it.
Yeah, agree. If we have to re-race it later and put the new one in, we can do that, we can spring it over it.
I agree. It needs to be done.
So if you look at the numbers, the first column is what we requested from ARPA and the grand total's on the backside. Um, the front side is basically what the landscaper bids are. Um, and then the bids came in, obviously way over what, um, we had estimated with the architect.
Mm-hmm.
So they were like up to a hundred and ninety thousand, a hundred and nine thousand. So the first revision we did was looking at just eliminating the parking lot improvements. And that still didn't get us where we needed to be. So we went back again and we said, okay, can we live without ADA access? And that's, um, that's those, the last few columns that you see there. And if we went with GT scapes, we would be within the budget that we asked for. And I think still meet the goals of what this committee was put together for, which was to provide safety, especially in the parking lot. Um, and we do that with the lights, we do it with cameras and we do it with the gate. And we were also asked to provide better access to the beach, which I, I believe we are accomplishing. You know, with this design, without going overboard. Um, and again, if we wanna make it ADA accessible in the future, should that need arise, the way that this would be built out, um, the architect said he easily could add on that ramp at a future point.
I like, I like what you've done with the revision. I have, I thought that there was a lot of stuff in that original that was unnecessary in that it was gonna cause the same thing I'm talking about. If you, if you do something for the town and you put it in there, you have to maintain it. And given the history and the way that area is used, there's no saying that you're gonna be able to maintain it. You're probably gonna have to replace half of it. I also, I've always wondered if, and how if there was ever, um, I think I went to the board one time and asked and then I, but, um, I'd like to know how many Lyman residents utilize it and how many from out of town utilize it. I'd like to get that mixed. I know there's some of each. But I don't know what that ratio is.
We don't need that. And I think everybody's way to find that out. A great way to find that out. It's not the only way, obviously, but.
To me, it's a priority.
You know, if we have use that big system.
I mean.
Provide the people of town, the, the town of Lyman with an access card where they get in and they don't pay. And then anybody from out of town, a main resident out of town, we have, we can charge a reasonable fee and we're working with Maine Inland Fisheries on determining what that is. And we're looking at other places around the state that, where their waterways are stocked and they're still charging access. And Sebago's charging six dollars an, an adult. Barker Pond is charging fifteen dollars a car. Uh, you know, there are other places that are charging people, mainers, but out of, out of town mainers a fee. And then out of state, we can charge whatever we want. So we're, we're working on that currently. We're going to Barker's Pond this weekend to learn more about what they're doing.
Thought it through way more than I did. I was thinking I, you know, go there and ask. Not ask exactly where they're from, but are you from Lyman?
I know.
Yes, no.
Well, they had a bunch of people from Bedford Post on Facebook that they're like, oh, we went to go to Barker's Pond, fifteen bucks, they went up and price. Go to Kennybunk is free and they all went there. So, I mean, living near the beach, it's, I mean, you have the, the trailer park and some that walk, walk there. There's some kids that live in some back roads, walk there with their parents.
Yep.
And I know some of those people that go there, but from, from them, the moms I know, hanging there with their kids, it's ninety percent not.
It was like twenty-five cars in the parking lot today when I went by.
Yesterday, you couldn't.
Seventeen before I came.
And then we went for fireworks.
I've been driving through the parking lot.
Sat on the beach and it was covered in cigarette butts. We brought a blanket, but I mean, I, I'm like eating, cause he was playing the chair. I'm like, cigarette butts dude. Then I'm like, there's probably needles here too. It was at night, but it's just covered in shit. I mean, just no one's maintaining it. And I think residents care more about their surroundings and not ours.
I, I don't disagree with that statement.
Started out, I think, at a dollar a day when I was little. And I think by the time I got to a teenager, it's five bucks a day there. Some little old lady collected the money.
Is that when they had a horse and?
Kennybunk Pond.
Yeah.
I am, I am more in favor of this plan now than I was previously.
I'd like to make a recommendation to the group that I, I feel very strongly myself about having that ADA, um, ramp out there. And if we could, and these are good numbers. These are bidded, these are, this isn't like the transfer station, we gotta go out the bid again. These are, these are sound numbers. To look at, um, the revised scope retaining ADA access, uh, at that ninety-three thou, ninety-one thousand.
Can I ask a question? When you, uh, that, you said that the, the, one of these estimates or quotes was, was, um, inside the realm of what you asked for? I don't even know what that is right now. I, I feel like I'm.
Wasn't it ninety? Wasn't it ninety?
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Was it seventy, yeah?
Seventy-six thousand.
I thought it was ninety.
What's on there? She's not following up.
But even still, but even still, if we're saving, if, I think if we can, it, let's shoot for it. If we making some, if we have some savings from the transfer station and that we can, and put money towards this, I, I just think it would be, it would be nice to do that.
I think that you guys are ready to go, right? Like you, if you have the commitment from the town to get the funds, they're ready to start.
We're ready to, yeah. What we'd have to do, the next step would be if we get, if we get a commitment to the funding, I'm not, I'm not asking anybody to do any more work on this unless we get a commitment, cause there's been too much work already. Um, but if we get the commitment, what we would do is have the architect update the specs to send back to the two vendors that bid on it. And have them just give us their best and final costs. And hopefully that they should be within what we have estimated, cause it came right off of their bids.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we're ready to go.
So, so what would you be proposing, Tom?
I would.
The ninety-one thousand, five seventy-one?
If we're going for low bid, I didn't look at their, their paperwork, but if, if that's, if that's a viable number, ninety-one thousand, yes.
My only problem with the automatic aid system in this is once you start charging people, they're not gonna go in, they're living in a park on the street. We don't have anybody to, not to be on the street, okay? Because the county doesn't do it, the state won't do it, so I don't know the way you, you know, how you would force not parking on the street. Otherwise, that's fine. I mean, I have no problem, but just.
Yeah.
You tell a few and then word gets out.
Yep.
And what's, what is it gonna be like in the, in the winter time? What about the winter time for ice fishermen?
Yeah, they're in the morning, anyhow, for gates open sometimes.
Yeah, will they be able to get in?
Yeah, it would be the same thing.
They'll be paying, they'll be paying to get in in the winter time?
So, they would have to come to the town hall to get?
Yeah, we're also considering, and I haven't approached them at all yet, but I'm thinking that maybe the homestead would help us out and, and sell some passes or give passes. They'd bring business into their store. I know they're not open all winter, but.
And with that design, uh, on the beach, will they still be able to drive vehicles out onto the beach? And, or onto the lake in the winter time?
Yes, we're doing anything with the ramp. Ramp stays as is.
Well, I do recognize that you guys have spent a lot of time and a lot of work and effort and I, I picked up, and I may have been misreading it, but the other night at the meeting and you said, you know, we've spent enough time on it. About that, um, I do appreciate your time and effort, everyone. It's, it's all appreciated. And I understand also that, that it's a slow process. It has been and it will probably still be. Um, don't quit.
What, uh?
Oh, no, we're not gonna.
If you get, if you get the funds and the mon, if they, they say yes, we'll, we'll have our, we'll, we'll honor our prices. Will they start this year?
I don't know. I, I, I don't know what their schedule is. We have to ask.
Salmon Falls is pretty big. Oh, we're not using Salmon Falls.
What's nice is the architect will continue to oversee it. That is, that is part of this budget. And he's worked with both these, um, these guys before.
Who did you end up using for an architect?
Dave Mainz. He has been phenomenal. We've actually asked him to start tracking how much, how many hours he's, he's given us without charging us.
Nice.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That was it.
Phenomenal job.
Is he, is he local? Is he in? I didn't know if he lived in town.
Yeah, I thought I saw in his paperwork. Uh, yeah, Kennybunk Store Street.
Well, like, I, I don't wanna say I grew up, but I grew up on Store Street, as much as I grew up.
So can we come to a consensus? I mean, I know we can't make a vote or anything. That. Cause it's like, can we round up to ninety-two thousand for Kennybunk Pond, hoping that the numbers can come in?
Just use that as our base number when we're looking for, when we're looking for.
That's what, and then.
That leaves us two hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars.
And then they can go out and get the bids.
No, I didn't. Just their, their ninety-two of that.
Yeah, they're, I just.
Yeah, just one more thing I wanna add and Amber, um, pulled some numbers with Jeanette to look at what we've spent at Kennybunk Pond over the last five years versus what we've spent at Bunginut. And, and in our highest year in twenty-twenty-two, which includes some of the work we did here, it was twenty-three hundred dollars that was spent on here at Kennybunk Pond. Versus, look at the money we're pouring into Bunginut. Seventy thousand, forty-six thousand, forty-four thousand.
It's two different animals as well.
I know.
And, and I'm not, I'm. And, and I'm not, I'm not discounting one over the other, but I mean, look at the expanse of Bunganut for one thing. And.
The amount of people.
My same old drum I'll beat is, are the taxpayers getting the most bang for their buck there?
But that's what I'm hoping will happen.
Yeah, right.
Around stuff that they do. That the people in that area can use that.
And I, then that, that, it's, that for some reason has always been. As long as I've ever lived in this town for forty-one years and as I can remember. If you wanted to go do family stuff, it wasn't always like this. You'll go to Bunganut and if you wanna go raise hell and party, you go to Kenny Bunk Pond. Uh, and. It's unfortunate that that is what it is, but I mean, it's postage stamp and a, and a letter.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, initially when we were looking at the parking lot, we're like, oh, we can make a picnic area, you know, we could do something to make it a little bit more family friendly, but.
The parking area, I think, is, is usually, well, mostly utilized. Like today, there wasn't, I don't, I don't think you could have put five more vehicles in there. Without blocking somebody out.
And I've been driving through the parking lot over the past couple of weeks, especially on busy days to see, just to look at license plates. And every license plate now has dollar signs. But um, you know, on, on a busy day, I'll see maybe four, four, five cars from out of state. Usually on the weekend, during the week, very few, like tonight, there were two.
You should look for transfer stickers.
Yeah, yeah, transfer stickers, cause that would, yeah, then we would know if they were, we could have to get out.
Thank you.
All right, uh, go to the.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming and showing me that.
So just to confirm, I just wanna confirm, we're all in, in fit, like, we're not taking a vote, but we're all sort of. On the same page with the ninety-two thousand number?
I think then we'll establish our numbers, be able to figure out, at least figure out if we have enough money. And if we don't, well, you know, maybe we go back now.
We'll just have to go back to the.
Make it work.
I am in favor of this revised plan. The uh, the ADA access, I'm not sure about. Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I, I hear where you're coming from and I'm looking at the differences in the numbers and it, and it does make sense. And I, so I would, I would go in agreement to that number rounding it up as well.
I just think if we don't do it now, it's not gonna get done. It'll be a long time before it gets done.
I think you really have to think about. And I thought we shouldn't say this.
Oh, say it now then, cause you.
Um, but do you really need it? How badly do you need it? And it will take up part of the beach area.
My question is, how much of the beach does that take up?
Yeah, a lot, it looks like a lot to me.
Yeah, that ramp down the side.
All depends if you have a handicapped, handicapped child.
Right.
And that's, it's important to them.
Yeah.
So. I'd rather have a handicapped child down there than somebody digging a hole and pooping in it.
Yes.
Be perfectly honest with you. I'm sure the Dagels would appreciate that too. So, that's, that's just my opinion.
But again, once you get down the ramp, where do you go from there?
Well, there, I mean, people who are handicapped that, you know, there's a lot of technology out there that if somebody truly wants to go to a beach, they'll, they have wheels and. And stuff for them. If we, if we make it so they will come, then maybe, you know, they'll, they'll give somebody an opportunity.
Maybe those are the out of towners that we charge fifteen dollars and they're like, we're gonna go to Kenny Bunk Pond, cause I can get my wheelchair down there, you know, I mean.
Are being grandma?
Yeah.
Yeah, grandma, yeah.
Would that, is that a permanent structure? Would that have to come out like a dock?
No.
In this.
Permanent.
And little kids. You know?
Yeah.
Strollers, strollers or two-year-old or four-year-old walking. Running, falling on their knees. Not that I know anything about that.
You remember those days, don't you?
They're women and men. Go to the beach first or go to the ball field side. Ball field's pretty easy as far as I'm concerned. I, I'd scratch everything on that list, except the, and I don't, maybe we can take it out of capital, throw that out there again. There are some safety issues with the back deck. It has fallen off, it's been jury rigged, it's been scabbed on to. The four-by-four posts are breaking off the railings.
No, that building is a mess.
The building is a wicked mess, but, yeah, this is the back stairs that go up to the storage up top.
Extremely unsafe.
I remember up there in ten years.
And, and the building is a mess. The building's a mess. There's holes, there's probably twenty, thirty holes in the siding. Just from baseballs or whatever being bounced off it. And like, it never had door trim. So the, like, this is the side of the, the door, it's, that's the mouse hole right there where everybody goes in. It's just, it never had trim, it's just rotted. The strike side is put into OSB plywood. We don't know how that gets when it gets wet. I can't believe that door even opens and closes. Uh, but these, as far as I'm concerned, aren't, but that deck. That back railing I think needs to be done, but we could take that out of capital, we could take it out of whatever.
I just have a question, cause I, I have been over there a few times now, um, thanks to Mass Basic Little League. Um, so I haven't been there for a soccer game. Does that, like, how does that building operate? What, what is its function?
Uh, upstairs is just storage, there's baseball and soccer balls, everything's up there. Uh, downstairs during the season is concession.
They operate. I, I only went in there to like put softball stuff back in, so, in that lower section, so.
That's usually cleared out big time come fall, yep.
I am.
And uh, you know, the parking lot's the parking lot. Right now, we park across the street. When it gets too busy, what, we, we still keep doing it. I don't, I mean, that's a lot of money for a parking lot.
You mean, are you talking about the, the uh, the gravel, the new gravel, the new parking area? Or is there more to it than that? I'm sorry, I keep asking all these questions.
Do you have yours? Uh, uh, I can, uh, remove stumps, rock, uh. Remove stumps and rocks, right-hand side of gate. So when you go into Bunganut, they were gonna make a big parking lot on the right-hand side. There's a lot of stumpage, had a lot of fill had to come in. So the first couple in that are just to make the parking lot.
Okay.
And then fencing, because you made a new parking lot. Then, th- there was some things in here that just seemed like wish items, like the well.
Well, I, I looked at, at the well, do they have, is there, what do they bring in water to sell?
To do everything, like cook with, do hot chocolate with, yep.
So, um, I feel like as a board. On a whole, we've been watching Bung in a ball field of, not just the ball field, but the whole place in general hemorrhaging money. And going over budget. Haven't, have we not? Um, I feel like we have, there's more issues. Than this, that we really have to look at a whole and we really need to figure out what our, what is our goal with this? Do, and, and if we wanna continue operating the way we operate, do we wanna change things? What's our timeline for change? How do we wanna proceed? What's a logical budget for it? I feel like because of the size of it and the, the whole expanse. The, the former uh Boy Scout camp property and all that, that is our diamond in the rough. And I'm not discounting any other parts of town, but I feel like that is a place, but we're, we're hopping around. I mean, it's always been, like, as soon as that ball, that ball, the soccer field was built up there, it became. The, the holy grail to some, to some people and I, and I'm, I'm not discounting playing ball or not, but as a whole, I feel like. It needs to have a bigger scope to look at rather than just these pieces.
Yeah, and that's why the committee has been formed, exactly what you're saying. Uh, we've had this discussion already, which, I mean, you're almost saying forbade, cause I was the one that was saying that this is a diamond in a rough, because. And all the years I've lived here, um, I had never been down there. I've been in the parking lot.
And I said the same thing when I was on the board before. I was like, oh my gosh, this is.
Yeah, and I, so I walked the whole thing. I created a document here of things that needed to be done down there. And that doesn't even touch anything that's on here, but it's a whole, it's a, it's a bigger scope of work that needs to be done. Long-term. And there are some initial things that, like that bridge, we need to take a look at it. There's a prior, prioritizing that we need to do. And the committee's gonna meet, what, in a couple of weeks, um, for the first meeting and then start taking a look at it. I mean, I, if there is any ARPA money left over that could go over to something that's a safety issue. Then we should look at that, that, that booth when you walk in, needs to go. It's mold infested, it's, it's going into the ground, it's unsafe.
Man, that thing was rickety ten years ago.
Well, it's more rickety now. Every building out there needs to be replaced. Every building out there needs to be replaced. There's raccoons that are in the, in the uh. Trash bins, we got a, we got a dumpster out there now, so Dave isn't getting attacked by raccoons. Um, so we had that problem. And he asked, please, can you get a dumpster out there? We put a dumpster out there. So they are seeing that people are listening. And that we have an interest out there now. And I think we can, it, that's a definite. Plan and maybe down the road, we need to get an architect down there, but that's big money.
Did we just find common ground, Tom?
We did, we did. We're not that far apart.
That's awesome.
How much, how much revenue will you be bringing in by um setting these, the fee schedule for the ball fields?
Oh, we don't have a fee schedule for the ball field, but we updated the fee schedule for the lakeside part of it. So I had generated some spreadsheets to get them to collect the type of data we wanted them to collect. And now they actually just turned in today all of that, so I've had a chance to look through.
Oh, I thought it was.
They're coming from them.
So that was, that was something. No, no, no.
I had, I had heard that.
That was something that we talked about for sure, you're not, I'm like, I'm with you, I'm with you. We talked about it, I think just for this year, because some of the uh groups that always use it had already like put their papers in, it would really feel shady to pull the rug out. From underneath them. And some of them do make significant donations and then others, it's kinda like, what are we doing here? So, so I think, and I don't know how everyone else feels, but I think that's something that the committee could kind of help work on based on any data we maybe have on that.
Yeah, on field side, not so much, lakeside, collecting data.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think we did look into how many teams use it, how many kids are on those teams, like how many needs.
Yeah, and we were talking about selling ban, you know, banner space out there on the, on the fencing, but this year, like I said, is not the year to do it.
There's just so much opportunity there to turn that deficit around.
Yep.
Yeah.
Even the pine.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Yeah.
That would be great.
To be developed.
That's it, that's what I'm saying.
So the first step that we took was with the Y to Lindsay's point, we, we had a whole, what, two workshops with them, I think, where we just talked about like. Okay, what are you charging for like a non-resident season pass? What are you charging? Like, I think they were charging fifteen at Carlo, I think we've upped it to twenty this year, just because. If you go down to like Pine Point, you're paying twenty bucks to park for the day. But I think it's forty on the weekend, which is.
And it's, and, and the same thing's happening there that happened with the transfer station. There hasn't been any preventive maintenance. The, the mansion, the green, the big green building, it's just fallen down. It's rotten on the bottom, the sills are rotten, the windows are rotten. We gotta do something.
Remember when there was a cabin up there or a house and, and we, I think we ended up there and.
Yeah, that one, that one came down, but someplace in the woods, there's a nice little Boy Scout uh house. I haven't gone out there yet. Little camp. So there's, it has so much potential.
I, I, my recommendation. I mean, looking at this, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stop progress and I, and I feel like these are. That, that the ARPA committee spends time and effort as well, which is to be respected. I'm not sure how much of the ARPA money should go to this. Right now, I feel like we, we, we've had a target of priorities. And I believe the transfer station should be. I mean, if we, if we committed ninety thousand to Kenny Bunk Pond and the rest of the, to the transfer station, if we could get. Our estimates and, and, and quotes to come in at reasonable levels. Take, well, in the salt shed, there, um, everybody uses that. Everybody likes them when their roads are sanded and salted. Everybody likes a place to take their trash and maybe pick up something when they're up there. I feel like those, that should be our two priorities for now. And then as the, as the Bunganut committee comes up with. Ideas and, and comes up with a cohesive plan, then.
I mean, I guess I could see how the transfer station, um, benefits the town as a whole and then Bunganut, you know, benefits the town in some ways, but also benefits out of town. So I think sometimes, and Michelle's mentioned it before, sometimes you go to, there's people swamped in there. On the lakeside anyways, I don't know so much about the field side, but.
But I, and that's, that's my, to my way of thinking at this time.
I agree with you. To a point. I think we should get the transfer station quotes. Revised yours, see, see if they are gonna honor it, you know, at the ninety-two, and then see what we got from there. And then do we look at twos at the, at the transfer station? Or do we put something towards something that's like the bridge or something over at uh. Or, or the shack, and the shack wouldn't cost that much.
The safety items that you were talking about, the bridge.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and the re, the railing that Russ was talking about and stuff like that, I mean, I think those things should happen regardless. Of how the funding comes, because they are safety issues. And, you know, we don't wanna put the town's fanny out in the breeze, I don't.
Yeah, no, I don't either.
I have no desire.
We should get. Figure out how to put something together for a spec on, on both of those.
I had it.
You have it on the, on the building?
I had bids come in on the building.
Yeah.
Oh, how much did they come in on the building?
Eleven, three ninety from BD Carpentry and twelve twenty-four from KCB Landscaping.
But I mean, it depends on where we go with that. Do we replace the siding? It, it's gonna rot behind it. It's gonna be getting wet, it's OSB. I know how the OSB does when it gets wet.
Was that the whole thing?
Yeah, this does have.
That is for everything, that's what I'm saying.
Eleven thousand dollars, that's, that's cheap.
We just go for the safety portion of it.
Pocket change.
The Lord is the guy that did the covering for the.
Yeah.
Song.
Bob.
He does decent work.
Yeah, Bob's really good.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's eleven thousand to take care of the whole building. I think if we can.
That's new doors, everything.
Yeah, if we can come up.
And then that can be, so, and I guess this is just another question, and maybe it's more of a Bunganut committee thing that they look at, but. So Mass Basic United uses concessions and sells concessions and obviously reaps the revenue from the concessions. But I guess I can't help but wonder if that could potentially be like a town, like a Parks and Rec thing that. For whatever groups may, may or may not be there, I don't know, like, I'm not trying to take away from, from any specific group, I'm just talking like. Could that at some point be a revenue generation?
Even shared, yeah.
Once the building is like safe and to a like. I'm just gonna say, like, we were there for softball and older kids go and run and play and. Um, fire chief's son and my daughter are running and I look over and they're up at the top of those stairs. So now, knowing what I know now, I'm like, you know, we didn't, we didn't gate them off, we didn't do anything, because we would, like, we wouldn't have known, right? So, I just think it's important that we do something about those, so.
Eleven thousand dollars.
I think we should do these things.
Yeah.
Regardless of whether it's ARPA funds or not, I think that those are safety items.
Out of capital.
I'm just saying.
This is projects that choose us.
It's less than twelve grand to, to, and it's mostly safety items and, and, and maintenance upkeep, which. We need to do. We're gonna, if the town's gonna own something, we should take care of it.
Yeah.
We, we're supposed to, that's our job, one of our jobs, to look after that stuff and.
Well, it hasn't been for a long time.
Obvi, that's obvious.
I, yeah.
And I, and I, you know, and, and there's law.
Okay.
It's hard to overcome it real quick.
Yeah, no.
Summarize where we're at here. We're gonna. Put back up bids for transfer station, all the number one items that we came up with. See what those come in at. We have the number, pretty solid numbers, Kenny Bunk Pond Committee is going to. Once we say, yes, this is what we wanted to do, you're gonna confirm with those vendors that this is still your price, this is your final price. And then we'll probably have on the agenda next meeting to talk about this eleven thousand, three ninety and awarding it. Out of capital money. Does that make sense to everybody? Sorry, I don't need to hijack it, that's just how I bring one.
I think that's good. Summarize it up. We're all on the same page.
Pick the ball.
And I'll find somebody for the bridge.
Well, the bridge might not be that expensive, like.
You may be able to re, repost it.
Yeah, I'm just worried about the water.
Yeah, well, I mean, with the spring, with the springs last summer, we've had so far, copious amounts of water. We, we, the water table came back up after this rain a couple of days ago. Well, over the last three days, um, back up to the level it was at in April. Which is extremely high. My uh, leach field is now back underwater. Which is, was extremely high, my, uh, leach field is now back underwater, joy, I've never seen this in July, ever, ever. It is, but, um, yeah, I.
I know what you guys are talking about, we only got two rainstorms, one for thirty-two days and one for twenty-seven.
Yeah, right.
You are right, you are right.
I went back.
You're such a smart guy.
To where I'm putting the patio in Lake Arrowhead, and I know on the radar the other morning, I was gonna go to work on Sunday morning, and then that rain came through, and it was huge. I have a trash barrel that was underneath the deck, it was almost full of water, it was a thirty-five gallon trash barrel, it was almost full of water.
My, my pool came up at least six inches.
They had to pump the pool off, yeah, I'm sorry to get off, get, uh, off the topics.
Can I just ask one for a clarification, so, you're gonna put the, the bid up, back out on transfer station number one, I'm gonna wait on that before I have people bid, because I don't know what they're bidding on, are they bidding on ADA or non-ADA? Right?
I think they want ADA.
I think.
Honestly.
But if, if they come in over.
But we're, they have it separated out, yeah, okay.
I, we're talking for Kennybunk Pond, right?
Yeah.
I thought we were working off the bids that came in, so we were gonna negotiate with the bidder.
We will, I'm, I'm not putting you back out to bids, but I wanna go back, I'm hoping I can get a better price, saying, look, this is it, I need your best and final.
Yep.
Work it out.
And I think that, for, for her doing this, to get the better price, if she can go in and say, listen, I already have the commitment from the town, this is what I have, this is what I have to do this in.
They spend a lot of money putting those in.
Yeah, and I, I, I think, that's a, that's a great idea, no matter what the transfer stations come in at, because I feel like, if we cut that chunk off, you take the, well, no, I don't have it in front of me, I did have it in front of me, the number, what is it, three seven, three, three twenty-seven, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
Yeah.
Take out the ninety-three, and.
Two thirty-five.
Then, and that goes to the, to the transfer station, and we do what we can on all those safety items, and, and then, if, if there's still more things that need to be done, which is, obviously, there's gonna be at Bunganat to, to fix more of that stuff, that's when we start looking at. Capital stuff, in addition to the town hall stuff, because I feel like that, that's a, something that we should be moving forward on as well.
I think that would be okay, because the to, one of the total, the total bid for transfer stations that came in was two sixty-three, seven fifty.
And that's without the electrical, right?
Oh, that is without the electrical, correct, that's also without us scaling anything back. So if there was two, what, like, two thirty-five, two, after Kennybunk Pond.
Is that Brian, Dan Cox?
Also, I think that one of the nice things about having that Bunganat committee, is, I mean, Michelle, just in a search, already found grants that could be used, you know, for that, so, with their.
They offer the same grant every year.
You know, that, I think maybe, with the Bunganat committee, maybe we can look for grants that we can work to.
Mark for that.
Improve that part, without.
As long as, as long as we look at the small prune on them, because sometimes, we have to commit to things beyond afterwards.
Yes, yeah.
Matching, or, like, you know, things like.
Sell your soul.
Well, we looked into, when I was on the board before, um, getting, uh, sheriffs, uh, officers from the sheriff's department, and there was a cop grant, but the cop grant also, it, you had, it, you paid more and more and more of the salary as it went on. And after so many years, it was all on you and stuff, and it, it really wasn't, wasn't a great deal.
Yeah.
Brady was saying that, fishing game, and they potentially would put a boat ramp in and stock the pond, the old boat rent that's there.
As long as there's access.
They just need access, but it's just ramps all crap.
You mean state, not our?
Main fishing gate.
Main fishing gate.
Yeah, so, it's, it's the Bunganat Pond, the committee can definitely take that off and ma, make phone calls, and I think everyone's, cause Parks and Rec is part of it, too, so they're pretty excited about Bunganat and the projects that can happen over there, and making it work for the town, and. Can't wait to get that committee going.
I know, I think it makes sense to let that committee.
Yeah, I'm on it, and then Parks and Rec, um, and Rustier Liaison.
I'd be more surprised if you weren't on it.
Well, I had choice between IT or Bunganat, I chose Bunganat.
Good choice, good choice.
So, are we feeling more comfortable about this?
I am.
Yeah, yeah, this is, no, this is good, no, this is good, I, I think we've finally got a handle on it.
On behalf of our committee, thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You did a lot of work.
Oh, I am.
So, who puts it back out to bid? The transfer station, we just throw the RP back on the website, and just.
Well, I need to know from you guys, like, when do you wanna open bids?
Do we have to put it out to bid, do we, have you, you haven't awarded anything, because we were talking about this, and we haven't made any decisions yet, but, do we?
But I said they all expire, but.
They all expire, but, but does that mean that we can't go to them and say, would you hold the price, or, you know, has anything changed, if you?
Might get better prices.
Right, yeah, and maybe that happens, I mean, I don't know.
I don't know of anything, that was gonna be my question, is, I'm, I understand, so I always have vendors that say, like, quote valid for thirty days, I'm just gonna be real, sometimes we go back to them like six months later, and just because of the way that the bureaucracy and all the process, so I just, there's nothing that I know of in writing that says we can't go back to the individuals, both individuals, we have to be fair, we can't just pick one and not the other, to say, hey, we, we modified the scope, are your prices for all these pieces still valid, or how would you adjust it? Yeah, maybe as long as, like, cause we didn't change the scope too much, we didn't add anything, or, we're just taking a few things out, so. It could be a single. And we're giving everybody the same, fair opportunity.
We don't know for sure yet, if we're taking things off, we just.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So I can get a copy of your list or something, so I know what you guys decided, I'm what your numbers.
Yeah, correct, just make sure that my ones and threes are all the same as what you guys.
Yeah, right.
And then I'll make a copy for Lindsay, and then I can contact the bidders.
That's what, yeah, I need that. Hey, I have another folder with my name on it, how many am I gonna have by the end of the year?
Exactly.
Do you give them back, you know?
I do give them back.
Oh, I was like.
I have to get the.
We, Tom and I were the same, too.
Did you and Vicki wanna look and make sure that your ones and threes and?
I feel comfortable that our verbal.
I think we're, we're pretty close.
I'll make a copy of this for you, and then.
I felt okay about this. We said them all out loud, so. Yeah.
Did they have, did they have a meeting over at Town Hall?
I don't know. Yeah, I believe so, okay.
I'm looking for my paper, and I was flipped upside down, and it's, but there it is, I couldn't find it, I'm, it says, I'm always, you're gonna find it.
Your Rand卡t, can hold you, talk to them.
Well, I, um, I wanna go to the board, okay, my.
Can we turn this off now?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, are you guys all done on your workshop?
I think so, right?
I think I am.
Workshop all done.
Thank you very much. My first workshop, how's your first workshop going?
Good.
Dig it?
Yeah.